Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. Stuart Malloy is with Choice Home Health and Hospice. He will lead us in an invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let's pray. Wonderful God, what a privilege to recognize you today as we come together to think and to plan, share and dream. We give thanks for the men and women who gather here today and for the many diverse people represented. We're mindful today of the challenges before us as individuals, as a community, as a city, state and nation. We don't begin to think that we have all the answers, so we seek wisdom and direction from you. Grant us clarity of mind and heart and fill this room with your presence. Let us see the needs of this city through the eyes of God and give us your vision for our great city. We pray today for the hungry and the homeless, the abused and the oppressed, the sick and the dying, and we give thanks for those around our city who serve the broken with love and sacrifice. May your blessings, may your love, joy and peace abound richly in the lives of those in this room and around our community. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, first of all, it is wonderful to have such a large audience. Typically, if we have a large audience, that's not good.[143.34][143.34][laughter] But on swearing-in day, of course, we have a lot of people here who are to support the four councilmen who are being sworn in this morning, and so we really appreciate everyone coming today, and I'm certainly the four that are being sworn in appreciate it as well. We have a wonderful relationship with Oklahoma City University. As you know, that university carries our name, so we have an exceptionally close relationship nationally, and we like to draw attention to the wonderful performing arts that takes place at that university. Whenever they have a significant performance coming up, we ask one of their students to come over and give us kind of a sneak preview, and hopefully that will entice many of you to go over there and take part in the larger production on campus. Megan Wagner is here this morning. She's going to be performing Bernstein's Mass this weekend, and the number we're going to hear this morning is "Thank You." Isn't she wonderful? Why don't you tell us more about the production this weekend?
Okay, so Leonard Bernstein wrote this piece, and he calls it a theater piece for singers, actors and dancers, and so it incorporates all of that. There's dancing and beautiful music, and we actually have just a few more tickets on sale. It goes up this Saturday evening at the Civic Center at 8:00 PM. And do you know the number that they can call?
I believe it's 405-232-SING. It's the Canterbury Line. You can also call the Civic Center box office.
Thank you very much.
Let's show our appreciation again.[398.12][398.12][applause] I also get the opportunity to announce that today is National Service Recognition Day. Ray Beechy is here along with several others who are involved in the service part of the community work. I lost Ray in the crowd. Ray, come on up. Bring everybody up. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and is central to how we meet our challenges. Whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to helping communities recover from natural disasters. Whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills and leadership abilities for those who serve. National Service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood and faith-based group so vital to our economic and social well-being. Whereas local agencies and programs utilizing National Service participants and volunteers to benefit our most vulnerable citizens include Sunbeam Family Services, Inc., Senior Companion Program, RSVP of Central Oklahoma, Inc., Variety Care Foster Grandparent Program, Oklahoma Department of Human Services Area One Foster Grandparent Program and the Oklahoma Community Service Commission. Whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas AmeriCorps members and SeniorCorps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives and strengthen communities. Now therefore, Matt Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 9, 2013, as National Service Recognition Day in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our city, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Let's show our appreciation to all of these groups.[562.16][562.16][applause] I want to mention these organizations one more time because I'm sure they could use your volunteer services. Sunbeam Family Services, Senior Companion Program, RSVP of Central Oklahoma, Variety Care Foster Grandparent Program, Oklahoma Department of Human Services Foster Grandparent Program and the Oklahoma Community Service Commission. Thank each one of you for what you do on a daily basis, and be sure to take our best wishes back to your staff. Teresa Fletcher, where have I...I've lost you somewhere. Come on up, Teresa. Teresa has been named by the Oklahoma City Rotary Club and by the Mustang Public Schools as our Teacher of the Month. Let's show our appreciation.[631.72][631.72][applause] If I had told you before that she taught first grade, you probably would have applauded even louder, but we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Teresa Fletcher has been named Teacher of the Month for April 2013 by Mustang Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Teresa has been a resident of Mustang for over 30 years and is a 1994 graduate of the University of Central Oklahoma. Teresa has been teaching first graders for almost 19 years, spending 13 years at Mustang Elementary before moving to Centennial Elementary. Whereas Teresa serves on the leadership team and the literacy team at the school and also takes on the role of mentor to first-year teachers and student teachers. Whereas Teresa has been recognized several times for her teaching abilities and dedication, including the 1994-95 Mustang Elementary Teacher of the Year, Masonic Teacher of Today, 2007 Walmart Teacher of the Year, 2012-13 Centennial Elementary and Mustang District Teacher of the Year. Whereas teaching appears to be the Fletcher family business. Teresa's husband, Max, teaches fifth grade at Centennial. Son Mickey is a professor of neurobiology at the University of Tennessee Medical Center in Memphis, and daughter Tricia is an instructor at Redlands Community College and the University of Phoenix. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Teresa Fletcher on her selection as the April 2013 Teacher of the Month by Mustang Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now, there's a little bit of drama in that we actually have to vote on this to determine if you are going to be the Teacher of the Month. We have a motion in a second. All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Now you can applaud and show your appreciation. Thank you, and congratulations.[755.82][755.82][applause]
Mayor, if I could, while you're heading up, I thought I might share with the audience that this wonderful program has been underway for the last couple of years, partnership with the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City and all of the districts surrounding Oklahoma City. And Teresa is invited to attend the Rotary Club luncheon today at noon at the Petroleum Club, and she will receive a gift card stipend to be used in her classroom. So it's a wonderful day, and we've had a great opportunity every month to celebrate our fabulous teachers in our system.
You are absolutely right. We enjoy our teachers, and any chance to honor them is special to us. We're on item 3A of the council agenda, and this first item is to receive the official election returns for the election that was held April 2, 2013, in four wards of our city.
Move it.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously, and those election returns are officially received by the council. And now we will take...we'll move forward on the swearing-in ceremony for James Greiner in Ward 1, Larry McAtee in Ward 3, Pete White in Ward 4, and John A. Pettis Jr. in Ward 7.
Raise your hand. I, James Greiner, do solemnly swear...
I, James Greiner, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly...
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly...
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing...
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance...
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office...
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office...
...other than the compensation allowed by law...
Other than the compensation allowed by law...
I further swear...
I further swear...
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties...
...as councilmember of Ward 1 of the City of Oklahoma City...
Of the...
...as councilmember of Ward 1 of the City of Oklahoma City...
As councilmember of Ward 1 of the City of Oklahoma City...
...and trustee of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority...
And trustee of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority...
...the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
The Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
...and the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
And the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Great to have you. It's good to be here.
Ready? I, Larry McAtee, do solemnly swear...
I, Larry McAtee, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly...
And I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly...
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing...
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance...
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office...
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office...
...other than the compensation allowed by law...
Other than the compensation allowed by law...
I further swear...
I further swear...
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties...
...as councilmember of Ward 3 of the City of Oklahoma City...
As councilmember of Ward 3 of the City of Oklahoma City...
...and trustee of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority...
And trustee of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority...
...the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
The Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
...and the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
And the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
...to the best of my ability.
Thanks, Larry. Go get him. And Judge Vicki Miles-Lagrange is here to help with the swearing-in of Pete White.
I, Pete S. White...
I, Peter S. White...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey and defend...
That I will support, obey and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma...
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma...
...and that I will not...
And I will not...
...knowingly receive...
Knowingly receive...
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly...
...any money...
Any money...
...or other valuable thing...
Or other valuable thing...
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance...
...of any act or duty...
Of any act or duty...
...pertaining to my office...
Pertaining to my office...
...other than...
Other than...
...the compensation allowed by law...
Other than the compensation allowed by law...
I further swear...
I further swear...
...that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge...
...my duties...
My duties...
...as councilmember of Ward 4...
As councilmember of Ward 4...
...of the City of Oklahoma City...
And the City of Oklahoma City...
...and trustee...
And trustee...
...of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority...
Of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority...
...the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
The Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
...and the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
And the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, John A. Pettis Jr...
I, John Albert Pettis Jr.[1304.22][1304.22][laughter]
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support...
That I will support...
...obey...
Obey...
...and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma...
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma...
...and I will not...
And I will not...
...knowingly...
Knowingly...
...receive...
Receive...
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly...
...any money or other valuable things...
Any money or valuable things...
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance of non...or non-performance...
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office...
Of any act pertaining to my office...
...other than the compensation allowed by law...
Other than the compensation allowed by law...
I further swear...
I further swear...
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties...
...as councilmember of Ward 7...
As councilman of Ward 7...
...of the City of Oklahoma City...
Of the City of Oklahoma City...
...and trustee...
And trustee...
...of the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority...
And the trustee of the Oklahoma City Municipal Authority...
...the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority...
And the Oklahoma City Public...
Property...
...Property Authority...
...and the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust...
And the Oklahoma City Environmental Trust...
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
While we continue to get settled, I'll provide the opportunity for any of the recently elected and re-elected councilmen if they want to say anything, or thank supporters who have been involved in the process. Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank the city council, and also I would like to also thank former councilman Skip Kelly for his service towards Ward 7, and also to the City of Oklahoma City. With me today, I had a whole slew of individuals that represent Ward 7, also my family, my mother, my sister, my niece, my daddy and my stepmom, as well as long as...excuse me, and my church family. Again, thank you.
Thanks, John. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd just like to express how much I appreciate being back on the council. It's been a real joy for me over the last 15 years to serve, and it's a real honor and a privilege to do it, and I hope the next four are as good as the previous 15 have been.
Larry?
What are we doing? I was just saying...
An opportunity for you to thank the voters or...
Okay.
...any part of the process you'd like to bring up.
Well, it's an honor for me to be able to serve again the voters of Ward 3. It's a special privilege this morning to have my two daughters, seven of my 10 grandchildren from Oklahoma City here, two from California could not make it, and three from Oklahoma City had other commitments in school. The young man who administered the oath of office to me is Kyle Young, who was a graduate of the University of Oklahoma, a former member of the Youth Council here in Oklahoma City, and it was a special joy to have him. And we had a number of friends. I see some of them still here. I see Kim Lowe still here from Windsor Oaks, and I think some of the others have left. Of course, Rick from the construction workers area. I think I saw George Feener earlier from the retired firefighters. One of the joys of being a councilman is getting to meet so many of our fine people. I happen to believe that the good influence of godly citizens causes a city to prosper, but the moral decay of the wicked drives... I happen to believe that the good influence of godly citizens causes a city to prosper, but the moral decay of the wicked drives it downhill. And with God's blessings and with the good character of our citizens, I look forward to being a part of moving Oklahoma City in a continued positive direction. Thank you, Your Honor.
It is a tremendous honor to hold this office, and I won't take it lightly. I'm really looking forward to representing the people of Ward One. And I just want to get started, so that's all I have. All right. On the council agenda, then, I'll look for a motion on Item 3D and E. These are both appointments on MAPS III Citizen Advisory Boards. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 3F is a resolution that would approve the travel for me to attend the annual meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Onto the Journal of Council Proceedings, Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 2nd. And Item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 26th. Any comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And Item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a couple this morning, starting on the consent docket on Page Six. On Page Six, Item 6Q, we ask that that be stricken from the April 9th council agenda. This is an item, an agreement with O-G and E related to a solid waste facility, and it'll be resubmitted at a future time. And then moving on to Page 13, under Item 8J1, Item A, 1223 North Klein, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item C, 6908 Northwest 10th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item J, 1409 Northeast 29th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And Item N, 1417 Southwest 35th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And then moving on to Page 14, under Item 8K1, Item B, 2412 North Kate, we ask that that be stricken. The house is now secured. Item C, 2416 North Kate, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then Item E, 1301, 3101 North Portland, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, Item H, 4011 Northwest 9th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are eight items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, two items. All right, comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OC PPA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. Comments or questions on the EAT?
Just a question. I'm on these adjustments that are tied to the CPI or some other kind of index. Is that a ratchet sort of thing, or can we go down occasionally?
It goes both ways, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Ready to vote the EAT? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the item subject to individual consideration.
We have a motion in a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a few minor questions on 6D as in dog, H as in hotel, I as in India, Oscar point one, U as in Quebec, and W as in whiskey.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I think Pat's taken up all the time, but if he doesn't take up all of it, I would.
They're very short questions, ma'am.
Just like to mention 6F as in Frank and 6X.
All right, Pat, Item D.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item D, I was just curious as to process. This is a subdivision that the developer gave us money or pledged money for the improvements that he wasn't able to complete or didn't complete as he was developing a subdivision. And I was curious, does the city then act as a contractor on these projects?
Say that again, Mr. Ryan.
On these projects where we're given money to put in streets and sewage systems in a subdivision that's not finished, does the city then act as a contractor?
Sometimes we do it in-house. Sometimes we contract it out to finish a performance bond work. Eric?
I'm surprised.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about the process involved, not concerned. I should have asked this question years ago probably, but the process involved when we accept money in lieu of construction work on a new subdivision.
So, first of all, there's a couple of options. This happens rarely.
It happens more and more, it seems like, more frequently. And I wondered if we're giving too good a deal to the developers. Do we include in this particular estimate of costs our time our engineering group will spend on this project? Our supervision will be out there working on, make sure it's done properly?
The bond estimates are 10% above what the actual cost is projected.
I saw that, but is 10% adequate to cover all our costs?
It's going to be close. I mean, I think it just depends the level of input that we have. It doesn't happen very often, but obviously, I think that we'll make it work.
Does the developer do the engineering work? Do we pick up engineered plans for the streets and sewer systems?
The engineering work is done before it happens, because engineering work is done before we agree to it.
We don't have any engineering responsibility in these things.
Well, just to make sure that the.
Other than recognize some changes. I was just curious about the process more than anything else. What triggers our work in this area? Because, you know, obviously, the subdivision will develop slowly normally, and the lots will be made available as there's demand goes up. When do we decide to do this work?
We only would be involved in this work after the developer's defaulted and we've gone to the bank to collect the money on the bond.
Okay, then Bob, when do we actually do the construction work? Do we just do it all at once regardless of the development of the subdivision, or do we wait as it develops to do it?
It would really, a case-by-case basis.
And I think that's how it goes, too. I think it just depends what the developer wants to do, and we've got homeowner interest in the area, so it's individually.
The developer's gone by the time we get to this thing. So it's up to us, and we become essentially the developer.
So, again, it's homeowner interest in the area. We will finish the project if it was finished halfway, if it wasn't begun at all and there were no lots sold. I think it's a different situation. So, again, there's a commitment that has been made through the bonding for a certain amount of work, and we'll make sure that the amount of work that was committed to is completed. And then, again, Public Works Inspection Services makes sure that it's completed to city standards so that when it's accepted.
But that's no different. We'd have the same inspection responsibility if the developer was paying for it.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. On 6H, this is a street widening project, and I always wonder if we had a sense of the time when we were going to actually do this project. And I'll defer to the, Eric's looking it up, and I'll defer and get that information from him. Eric, do you have his timing?
I do. The plans on this project are actually 100% complete, and this is a project that we have that's ready to go pending availability of funds. When we look at the bond issues, and we just recently completed the 2013 sale, if we have a project, for whatever reason, that may have a delay, we would move this project forward. Right now, it's scheduled for a 2014 start, but it could move to 2013 if we see a delay in a 2013 project. So it's ready to go, but 2014 at the latest.
The only concern I had was we wanted, I think we should get it completed before the highway department completes Highway 74 so we can coordinate that.
And we will do that.
And Item I, this is a joint project with the city of Nichols Hills to do some things. And it calls for the city to put in ADA ramps, and we've got them all over the city that go nowhere. And I would hope that if we put in a ramp here, there's some sidewalk connecting to it. Because I've had several concerned comments from citizens about how we spent an awful lot of money putting in ADA sidewalks that go nowhere, that end in a wall or end in a utility fixture of some kind. And I think that gives us a bad reputation that we're not looking at this thing very carefully. So I hope we would do better than the Federals did on their stimulus money.
We've had questions on that over time, and we've actually put together information and put it on our website about why the federal requirements and why we do what we do with those ramps. And yes, sometimes when we're doing street improvements, we do put in the handicap access and do not tie into sidewalks at this time. It's anticipated at some future time, there will be a project to get sidewalks put in.
I think we ought to be diligent and pursue that, because the longer these things sit there without any kind of a connection, the more ridiculous the project seems. And then on 0.1, this is a loading zone, a parking restriction. And on the loading zone parking restriction, do we restrict that to a certain period of time during like 8 to 5 working hours and the space available after that for just a citizen to use as a parking space?
Eric, can you answer that? The application for the loading zone wasn't originally submitted that way. I would imagine that there was probably an opportunity to do that. There was no objection by the traffic commission, though, when they heard the case. It was a zone that existed previously. It's one that we're restoring after having completed the Project 180 work. But generally, when they're designated as loading zones, they're designated loading zones 24/7.
Okay, so we do have those kinds. We do have some, I think, also, that are designated just from 8 to 5 working hours, and they're available to the public. And I think we need to look at that, particularly since we're using more and more of the street parking to provide a parking solution for our downtown visitors. And Item Q, I just wanted to confirm that that project doesn't have anything to do with the CNG. It's just a natural gas project that serves the service station.
That's correct.
Okay. And one final other quick question. On Item W, we're putting in a new computing system. What, do we have an estimate of how much we're going to save with that system?
I'm sorry?
How much the savings are estimated to be by putting in that computer system?
You know, we don't. It's going to be a more convenient for our vendors and staff, too, but for our vendors in particular, to be able to submit the bids electronically. And so I don't know if we're going to be able to quantify that, Mr. Ryan. Hopefully, we'll be getting more bids, and we'll have less mistakes in the bids that we get in, but to quantify cost savings will be difficult.
Okay, well, I think we ought to watch that, because the concept of putting in a computer system sometimes to make things convenient is not really cost-effective. We need to work on making these things cost-effective.
Mayor, I just, I did have two quick things. One, the first one is Item 6F, and this is a contract award with the Water Utilities Trust, Turoy Construction Company, for utility cut repairs. And on my soapbox of aesthetics, we don't do a very good job of making those things look good. And, you know, we do have certain neighborhoods where we've got restrictions on the color of the concrete that they replace it with. But generally, these things are just cut in the middle of, you know, brand-new streets and slam down. And I just wish we could encourage Rudy to do a good job of making the repairs match the street pavings that currently exist. Item 6X is an amendment to our landscape architectural services with Hargraves and Associates. And I just want to mention that I think this is another step forward in the coordination that we're doing with our MAPS III projects. There's a little strip of our park that wasn't included in the original MAPS boundary that goes down to the river. And so we've asked Hargraves to provide some design services for us that will take the Central Park all the way down to the banks of the river. And I just, I think it's a great planning tool to ensure consistency as the park moves all the way down to the riverbanks.
All right, any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
Question, Mr. Mayor, on 6K and 6L, what's the timeline?
I've got the information for you. Hang on just a moment, please. On 6K, we've got work on North Bryant Avenue. The design on that project's about 70% complete. We are scheduled to go into construction in the spring of 2014, following the 2014 bond sale. It's a widening of four lanes, so it's a project that will begin in the next year, but the design is already underway. On L, we've got work, again, it's also on North Bryant, so it's the same project, but they were just two different right-of-way acquisition agreements. Thank you.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Onto the concurrence docket. We have a motion in a second on the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions on these items? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're onto Item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. We begin with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Five. It's an ABC issue at 1024 West I-240 Service Road. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Please come forward. We'll need your name and address, please.
My name is David Brockman. I'm with Hal Smith Restaurant Group, and we're in Norman, Oklahoma. The address of the property is 1024 West I-240 Service Road, and that's our old Krispy Kreme that we closed. And we are reopening that and remodeling that as a garage restaurant. We have one in Edmond right now and one in Norman, Oklahoma.
Any questions from the council? We are always looking for new developments, and the Hal Smith Restaurant Group's a great provider of food services, so we're looking forward to this. I move approval.
All right.
A question. What kind of restaurant?
It's a hamburger and street taco-type restaurant.
Thank you.
Did I understand there might be one coming on Broadway as well, or on Robinson?
On Robinson, 10th and Robinson.
North Robinson.
And then also at 122nd Rockwell.
Great, fabulous.
I would like one in Ward Seven.
Send me your information, and we'll work on that one.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're voting on Item 8A1. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward Three, 1811 North MacArthur Boulevard. It's currently R1 single-family residential. It would become a C3 community commercial district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up on this? Is the applicant present? Unless you want to say something, I'd move for approval.
Okay. We can't let you talk from there. If you want to talk, you'll have to come up. But you might want to just sit down and let us vote. It sounds like, it sounds like it's going to go your way.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right.
Yes, my property was there already rezoning for a long time ago, about 19 years ago, for the C3. Now I have some lab, about over two-acre lab, and I've been rezoning for the C3.
Okay, and I will need your name and address for the record.
My name is Tianbark, and I live in Yuqan. 10921 North 37 Yuqan.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any comments or questions for the respondent? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks for coming down, and good luck. Item 8A3 is also in Ward Three. It's a zoning case at 1424 North Rockwell. It's currently R1 single-family, and it will become a simplified planned unit development. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up on this one? Is the applicant present? If you could come forward, I'd just like you to ask one quick question. This is for a self-storage on undeveloped land on Rockwell. And as, once the project gets completed, what will people driving on North Rockwell, north and south, see as they look at the project? What kind of landscaping will they see between them and the actual units themselves?
Mark Grubbs, 1819 South Morgan Road, on behalf of the applicant. The facade from, the actual building facade will meet city requirements from anything viewable by Rockwell. And we will meet the city landscape ordinance out front, the tree spacing and amount of points required. The only thing that we asked for variance on in the TEs and planning commission was the five-foot landscape buffers inside the site-proof screenings. They have a hard time growing. They're not really something that anybody wants to see inside the mini-storage facility. They just asked that we continue to provide the one on the south that abuts the R1, but we just asked that it could be put on the outside of the fence so people could actually enjoy the landscaping instead of it being inside the fence. Does that answer your question?
Well, as far as the attractiveness as people go up and down Rockwell, it'll be an attractive-looking facility.
Yes, sir.
So I just need that commitment. That's, okay. Unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
All right, any other comments or questions on Item 8A3 before we vote? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B is a proposed name change in Ward Three. Larry, you okay with this?
Yes, I am. This is really an honor for Lindsay, who. This is really an honor for Lindsay, who has for many years headed up the FAA. It's a well-deserved honor, and I would move for approval.
Okay. Comments or questions on 8B? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C has been deferred until April 23rd. Item 8D is a request for a special permit. It's in Ward Four at 8001 Pol Road. Pete, you okay with this? Is there anyone here that's signed up to speak on this item?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I know a little bit about it. It's a consolidation. This company is consolidating several sites. They're an oilfield service company, and they may bring some additional jobs to Oklahoma City. It's in an area where it's a perfect location for what they're trying to do.
Your Honor, I have a quick question. Council, why... Are there special fire provisions for this kind of installation?
I think that's why they have to have a special permit, that they have to go through that, but...
The storage tanks, when they're constructed, will be reviewed... inspected by the Fire Marshal's Office, and so there are provisions. I don't know what the standards are, but they do look at any type of above-ground storage facilities.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete, you want to make a motion?
I move approval.
Okay. Comments or questions on 8D? Anyone opposed? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E is a request to close a portion of a utility easement. It's in Ward Seven. John? You okay with this?
Yes, I just have one question. The timeline on closing the easement is when?
The act... If you approve it today, it will be closed, and then the applicant will have to take it to District Court to have it vacated so they can build over it. That process takes, depending on the court schedule, could take six weeks, probably longer than that. But that will be after... Once you adopt the closing, then it'll be up to the applicant to take it to District Court, and it'll be on their timing.
All right.
This allows them to build across that property line.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. You'll make a motion, John?
I move that we approve.
All right. You have a second?
Thank you.
All right. Cast your votes. Item 8E passed unanimously. Item 8F is a final hearing. Council has been kept abreast of this a couple of times before. Any comments or questions today on item 8F? Anyone come down hoping to speak on this item?
Your Honor, I have a comment or question.
Yeah.
At the last council meeting, I asked for some comparisons of other retirement plans to see what kind of provisions they had for cost-of-living adjustment. And I got a comparison well done, but it was all strictly municipal government installations of various kinds. And I would like to have seen that comparison expanded a little bit to include some of the more logical competitors for our employees in Oklahoma City, the OGD, ONG, AT&amp;T kind of plans, and see what kind of provisions they have for cost-of-living adjustment.
I'm sorry we misunderstood that request last time, Mr. Ryan. We'll be pleased to get that... To work on getting that information.
Because the staff has always been very responsive to my request for information, and I just didn't make myself clear. I would like to widen our comparison a little bit to include non-governmental kind of operation.
Oh, you want to make a motion on 8F?
I move approval, subject to the... Well, I take... I would move that we defer this for two weeks until I get the chance to look at the study.
Second on the deferral. Any comments or questions then on a deferral for item 8F for two weeks? All right. Cast your votes. That item is deferred. Item 8G is an ordinance that will be introduced today. I think Eric Winger is here to lead us through the process.
Mayor, with the Project 180 improvements, we changed the downtown traffic signals, and amongst those changes are a flashing yellow light, and our codes do not allow for those.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So most of you who have driven downtown have seen the new flashing yellow left-turn signal. It's also in a lot of other communities around Oklahoma City. To give you a little bit of background on this, the Federal Highway Administration actually issued a memo in 2006 that at least started an interim approval process for use in cities across the United States. But the MUTCD, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is what we utilize here in Oklahoma City, the guide that helps us regulate signs and signage across the city for traffic, didn't incorporate that until 2009, and the state of Oklahoma didn't adopt the 2009 MUTCD till just last year. So our ordinance actually just needs to be updated. We are already using the signs, as other agencies have as well, so they're going through the adoption process. Some of the advantages of the yellow flashing left is that it replaces the green ball. It replaces the green light that we're very familiar in seeing in most of Oklahoma City, but it gives the vehicle more options to make that left-hand turn and doesn't have to wait for a protected green arrow. So we're seeing some increase in traffic flow through intersections throughout Oklahoma City. So with your adoption today, we'll actually start implementing the flashing yellow at more intersections, not just as a part of Project 180 and throughout downtown. We're finding that they're being well-received. You've seen probably the new sign. And for those that are unfamiliar with this, we do have a video on OKC.gov. It's also being shown on Channel 20 that will kind of describe a little bit more how to use those if there's questions, and then, of course, they can contact our office if there's any concern.
I think it's a good system. I think we need to publicize the protocol for using it. And I think we made some good first steps, but I think a press release, some kind of coverage in the newspapers or in the TV stations would be helpful, I think.
We can facilitate that. Thank you.
Item is just being introduced today, and we'll be setting a public hearing for April 16th, which is next week. So if anyone has comments or questions on this item and would like to come down to City Hall next weekend, we'd be glad to hear you. Next Tuesday, we'd be glad to hear from you. Any other comments today as we move this through the process? All right. How about a motion then to allow this to be introduced?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes on 8G, and it passes unanimously. Item 8H is another item that'll be introduced today, and Marcia Slaughter is here from the Water Department.
Actually, Craig Keith is going to explain this one to us, and these are both item H and I are related to water conservation.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. The two ordinances that are on before you are part of our ongoing water conservation program that we are implementing through the Utilities Department and the Utilities Trust. There are two sets of ordinances here, one in Chapter 55, which relates to how the Utilities Department communicates with the customer, and there's also Chapter 57, which is an existing provision that provides for water restriction uses and how we enforce those and how we get compliance with those provisions.
Your Honor, I have a quick question. Craig, is... On the process of assessing these increasing fines, do we give the property owner of its commercial or residential a warning first before we get a fine in place?
The... In Chapter 57, which is the section you're referring to, we have changed the fine system from a straight $167 to a progressive system, with our goal being to educate and to encourage compliance. As to your question, we have a notice provision, specific notice provision in Chapter 57. In addition, we have program changes that we're implementing to better communicate those notices and warnings to the customer.
I think the notices are going to be very important, particularly to residential, as they talk to their neighbors about the fact that they got cited for using your sprinkler system, and the word will spread to the neighborhoods pretty quickly.
And Chapter 57 has a whole list of different ways in which we communicate with the customer.
And which are?
They would include such things as publication, which we do with our ordinances. They include things such as mailers that are included in the bills. We have a robocalling system. We have... We are gaining information on emails. We knock on the door. We leave posted notes on the door, which our goal is to educate the customer as to what conservation regulations and rules are and to encourage their compliance. So the more that we provide notice and communicate with the customer, I think the more successful we'll be in that regard. It's also the reason why we switched the penalties to a progressive system, because what we want to do is encourage compliance. We're really not interested in the revenue.
Okay.
The provisions in Chapter 55 are some cleanup provisions, which better define who the account holder is, what their responsibility is to the city, and how the city talks to the account holder. So it has some provisions in there that are some very much a cleanup, but it also reminds the customer that their relationship with the city is a contract, and our ordinances are our contract. We've talked to Councilman Wyatt and Councilman Ryan before about how to better talk to the customer when they sign up for service. When a customer wants service from the city, typically they will call in, and we have a script, and we provide them with information. So Chapter 55 clarifies the customer's role and their relationship and what the conditions of service are, requires the customer and reminds the customer that when conservation measures are implemented, that that's part of their duties and responsibilities as a customer. And it also creates an appeal process should we need to enforce those contractual provisions so that they would have a voice and an opportunity to talk to the utility superintendent on those issues. The contractual provisions also provide us a civil option of suspending water service should the party be in noncompliance. Particularly, this is important in emergency situations because in addition to the overall education process of conserving water and the fact that water is a limited natural resource, we also have fire protection issues. When people don't comply with the water conservation regulations, sometimes our pressure drops and we have firefighting issues. So there are also emergency outside situations in which we may restrict some water usage. But in addition to that, we're included a provision in Chapter 55, which prospectively would require separate valves on irrigation systems so that should a account holder be in violation of the conservation issues, that we would have the option of only just terminating or turning off the watering system and then communicating with the customer so that they better understand what the issues are so that we don't have to impact domestic use. So one of the new provisions would be a separate cutoff for the irrigation system so we can get their attention, have them comply, but not affect domestic use. The reasons for the restrictions and increased fines is to educate the customer, to get compliance, and to conserve a natural resource. The new provisions define different notices and the way that we talk to the customer and a different fine system. Finally, the restrictions can come in any number of different formats. They can be voluntary. They can be mandatory. We currently have a mandatory water restriction on at this time with odd and even based upon your house and address number. It also would provide for emergency turn-off of order or not... Turn-off to maintain compliance with water restrictions. And again, it provides us with multiple different avenues for providing notice to the customer. The fines are proposed to be changed in Chapter 57 from $167 to a progressive system, starting with $119 and going all the way up to a Class B offense. Open any questions? It's only in for introduction today.
Craig, can you talk me through the process? If someone were to get a fine of $519, what would they have done prior to that?
That would be a third offense, so we would have provided them notice of the water rationing and conservation program. They would have violated it. They would have gotten a notice. They would have had a hearing on the first notice. They've been found to have violated the water restrictions on the first notice. Then they would have gotten a second violation, totally separate act. They would have been given a separate violation notice. They would have had another hearing. They've been found to have violated it again. And then there would have been a third time where they had separately violated the conservation order, and they have been given a citation and another hearing.
All right. And how does this compare with what other cities might have gone through? Did we draw this up based on what other cities' experiences have been?
We looked at more of a national basis for what other cities are doing successfully, and many of our sister cities in the metro area are looking to us to establish some kind of process that they can do similarly so that our education process and their educations will match, so they won't be hearing mixed messages, whereas one city says this and another city says that. So we both looked at the national system in order to establish these recommendations, but we're also are looking to coordinate with our sister cities.
And we have water customers that don't live inside the city limits. Are they affected in the same manner?
Yes. Yes. Our water contract provides that the cities to which we provide wholesale water service to will adopt ordinances and compliance programs that will at least match ours.
Okay.
The Water Trust has reminded us to meet with our fellow customer cities. We've had our first meeting. We'll be discussing this with them shortly to make certain that they're aware. The difficulty is fitting what's best for some of our other customers and with what we think will work best for Oklahoma City's customers. It's a common problem across the country. It's the biggest issue that we have in implementing programs like these in other utilities across the country is making the community area match. We're doing our best to work through that so that we get limited total messages out to people that match.
Okay.
Mayor?
No, go ahead.
First of all, for the new councilman, that was Marcia Slaughter. Marcia Slaughter is the Director of the Water and Waste Water Utilities. But I thought it'd be good to give you, particularly for our two new councilmen, a little bit of brief history on our water situation at this point in time. Oklahoma City uses surface water for our customers, and our customers are... Is a large base. It's just not Oklahoma City. We provide water to Norman and to Moore and to Edmund and as far south as Blanchard and to Sean E. and to Yukon and Mustang and Piedmont and War Acres and a number of cities of the village. We provide a lot of water throughout the metro area. About half of our water comes from the west, from the North Canadian River. The North Canadian River water comes down, and it comes from the west and from Lake Canton, and it comes down and it fills Lakes Overholser and Lake Hefner. The other half of the water comes from the southeastern part of the state. We have two lakes far southeast, Lake Otoka and the McGee Creek Reservoir, and we pump water, actually from the McGee Creek Reservoir, into Lake Otoka, and then that's pumped up to the Lake Stanley Draper on the southeast part of Oklahoma City. So that's kind of the big picture. We are in a three-year drought. We're in the most... The heaviest drought of record was a drought in the '50s, and we're approaching that at this point in time because of the drought situation that we've had. Everybody talks about the Dust Bowl days. Actually, the drought of the '50s is a drought of record, and we're approaching that at this point in time, in the third year of that. And we don't know how long it's going to go forward, but it's something that we need to take seriously. The combined capacity of our six reservoirs was at its probably all-time low sometime in the fall. We have had some moderate recovery from that. As we sit here today, Lake... The McGee Creek Reservoir is actually full. The Otoka Reservoir is down about 10 feet, Marcia. And so the southeastern part of the state isn't too bad. Lake Draper is low. The Lake Draper is low because we did some construction projects and didn't put any water in there for a year or so, a plant process where we rehabilitated pump stations and put water in there. The southeastern side of the... Part of the state is not in too bad a shape. The western part of the state is a little bit different story. It's always more arid in the western part of the state, and we've taken a release from Lake Canton earlier this spring that took Lake Canton down to a seriously low level. At this point, Canton's back up... Or Hefner's back up. Hefner's about four or five feet down at this point in time, like... Which is not bad for this time of year. Lake Overholser is down five, six feet, but it's Lake Canton right now, which is the significant one that's down. And hopefully, if we get the right storm over the weekend, we can do some more... Today and tomorrow, we can do some recovery, but it normally takes time to get those built... Brought back in. And so that's kind of where we're at. We're not in the dire situation we were in a few months ago, but we are in a serious situation, and we don't know how long this drought will continue. But we certainly have had highs and lows in weather patterns over the last few years, and we're doing this to seriously respond to that drought condition.
I might add to that. One of the things that this extended drought has brought to the attention of the Water Trust is that we need a... Oklahoma City has always had a plan that was far ahead of anyone else in the state. Our plan goes back to the '50s when we built the pipeline to Otoka. Then went... All during that time, then we... McGee Creek came online. Then Sardis was built for us. All those things are part of an ongoing... A supply plan. As the problem has progressed in western Oklahoma, that... In addition to the Canton not being close to full, the people that live in western Oklahoma have depleted their own groundwater at a remarkably fast rate. They pump it out of the ground to irrigate with. They pump it out of the ground to irrigate with. It's almost like, in fact, Ken Burns talked about it in the Dust Bowl thing about that it's almost the same idea as was going on back in the 30s. There's no plan to conserve the groundwater. And so, but we, what we're trying to do with this, and this definitely is a work in progress. This is one, this is a case where the idea of an introduction, an interim discussion, and a final discussion which will come could be most productive because we're looking for a solution to change the paradigm in Oklahoma City of how people use water. We want them to understand that it is a finite resource and that we can't continue to water the street and water grass that doesn't have to be watered but twice a week, water it every day, and expect not to use up the supply of water. It's just, that coupled with the fact that now other people have started to recognize the economic value of water, especially in southeastern Oklahoma. And so we're in this fight, if you will, about who's going to control it from an economic standpoint. So what we're really looking to do is come up with a plan to be as far ahead of the rest of the country today as we were 50 years ago, ahead of the country in developing all these outside resources. Oklahoma City catches, I'm really talking to you two guys more than anything else, but Oklahoma City catches a lot of flack about somehow Oklahoma City is the cause of all these problems for people in the southeast and in the west. But the fact is, the list, Jim didn't mention all the cities that depend on us for water and some cities between here and Atoka depend on us for raw water, rural water districts, the city of Colgate. I mean, it just goes on and on that depend on that system. And because it's such a valuable system and there were so much foresight and so much political cost paid by those that had the courage to do it 50 years ago, it's imperative on us to do the best we can to be good stewards for the future. So anybody, we've kicked this around at the Water Trust for six, eight months now. And this is the product we've come up with. But this next four weeks where it'll be on the council again and then again two weeks later then for our final vote, could be a process where anybody, any of the other seven of you that haven't had an opportunity to talk about it could bring your ideas to the table. Because basically, we are trying to change the way people think about using water. That's what the, that's the purpose. The fines, I don't like to use the word rationing because it's not, we're not talking about rationing. We're talking about long-term, permanent conservation of the use of water. So as a longtime member of the Water Trust, Councilman Ryan is a member of the Water Trust, we have, this is not something that came about in a week. I mean, this is something we've been dealing with now for a good year over the, because the drought has created this need and then the lawsuits have created a pressure on the other side. So I think any of you that have suggestions or ideas or want to talk about it, I think Pat or I, either one, and the manager, who is also a trustee on the Water Trust, would be most happy to talk to you about why we're where we are and why these are the ideas we've come up with. If there are other ones, bring them on. We want to change that attitude that people have about water is infinite because we know it's not.
Pete, I've actually had a lot of really good feedback from citizens encouraging us to do the same thing, raising water rates as you use more water. And you know, I think the word is getting out and I think people really are paying attention to the mission here, which is conservation.
Meg's a good example of someone who's drank the Kool-Aid. She faxed me a, something she found on the wall of her hotel in India about water conservation in India. I have a copy of this printing, printout that was nailed to the wall of her hotel about what to do about water. When I went to Florida to watch baseball last month, every hotel I stayed in had a sign in the hotel that talked about water conservation in the motel or the hotel. They all had signs about, don't do this, don't leave your towels on the floor because they have to be washed and that uses water and the soap in the water then gets in the groundwater and causes it to have to be treated out. I mean, it was a, and you get that awareness, you get a higher level of awareness about it. You start finding things other people are doing that we need to be doing. So I'm excited about the possibility because I do think it's our, last month was the 50th anniversary of the opening of the Atoka Pipeline. 50 years ago last month, for you two that don't know, all the councilmen that voted to build the Atoka Pipeline, the next election were defeated. And that was the, that was the issue. All four, there were four councilmen turned out, I think the mayor and three is what it was, but they were all lost as a result of their willingness to make that, the courage to spend that money to build that. So we stand on the shoulders of people that had that kind of political courage. And again, I want to encourage anybody that's got an idea or a question because long-term, this is very, very important to the future of Oklahoma City.
I have a question, Your Honor. Not particularly in response to Pete's comments, which I agree with 100%. We need to change our culture in Oklahoma City in this area about the use of water. Some communities have adopted ordinances that put different restrictions on new installations of sprinkler systems. For instance, a requirement that they have a separate cutoff, requirement that they have sensors that prevent the sprinkler system from running in the rain. And I think we should do that also if we haven't done it already.
We can look into those, yes.
All right. So we have two ordinances that are introduced today. There'll be a public hearing on both of these on April 16th. So we invite citizens who might have an opinion they want us to hear to come down on that date and we'll be voting in a couple of weeks. Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion on 8H for the first item to be introduced. Cast your votes, that item is introduced. And now we need one on 8I. Cast your votes, that item is also introduced. I want to thank the staff for their work on that, too. Item 8J is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes and it passes unanimously. On to item 8K, this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8K? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8L is a couple of revocable right-of-way permits, and I hope we have people here that might speak and allow us to know a little bit more about the events that they have planned. First of all, downtown OKC is going to hold an event they call Soundbites. And Jill and Elizabeth are here. We will need your name and address for the record and then you can tell us about this great event.
Hi, great. Jill Delosier, 10-900 Rock Ridge Road.
Elizabeth Newton, 517 Northwest 48th Street.
Okay.
And we are having Soundbites Concert on May 10th at lunchtime downtown and it will be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the Bank of Oklahoma Plaza, just north of Leadership Square. And this year, it's a one-time event. It had been a concert series in the past, so we're making it bigger and better and hoping for a big crowd. And we are closing the street and inviting food trucks as well.
We have four food trucks confirmed right now, so we're really excited for that. And the portion of the street that we're closing is from Robinson, just to like where the loading docks are on Robert S. Kerr. So there will still be access to all the parking garages and it'll just be closed for pedestrian safety and just for easing through the streets for the event.
This is the first year of this event?
We've had it in the past, but it was on, every Friday during the month of May and we're just doing a one-time event.
Mayor, it was always in Kerr Park. The park's under renovation now, but it was in and around and the local restaurants, I think, provided boxed lunches and things. So the food trucks are new. Some of us just got back from Austin and we actually had lunch in a food truck park. It was really lots of fun, something that we may be exploring a little bit here, but this should be a really nice event.
Thank you. The band that is playing is called My So-Called Band. They play 90s cover music.
They play what kind of music?
90s.
90s? Does anybody remember that?
Way back.
I didn't know there was music in the 90s.
A little refresh your memory.
It's a journalism, but those are oldies to them. That's the scary part of this equation. All right. Meg, you want to make a motion?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Thank you to you and good luck. Item 8L2 is for the El Dia del Nino, the Day of the Child, held April 28th. And I know David Castillo and Jaime DiPaolo are here.
Good morning.
Good morning, David. We'll need your name and address for the record.
David Castillo, President of the Grand Oklahoma City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, 309 Southwest 59th Street.
Morning, Jaime DiPaolo, 5113 South Harvey Avenue.
Just wanted to kind of give you some information on what we're doing. The chamber is taking on a project. What we're wanting to do is we're wanting to start a business improvement district on Southwest 29th Street from Shields to May Avenue, the whole corridor of Southwest 29th, basically. We've had some great success with the business owners and the property owners. And so they're really motivated now, they're at the point where, now keep in mind, we've only started this about six months ago. Now, they're very motivated already, they're actually very, very motivated. And so they're wanting to do some type of event to draw attention to Southwest 29th Street. And so basically, we're planning El Dia del Nino, which is the Day of the Child. It's a national holiday in Mexico, you know, it's a children's holiday, basically. So we're looking at closing the street on Southwest 29th Street between Chartel and Western. And we're going to have all kinds of activities. I'll let Jaime tell you about the activities. But basically, the business improvement district, I mean, it's coming along so well. You know, the bottom line is we're wanting to make it more attractive. Southwest 29th Street is not very attractive. And so we're working with the business owners and the property owners to start working together to make Southwest 29th Street more attractive. We see all the things that are going on on the river and we're hoping to bring a lot of the business to Southwest 29th, make it invitable to everybody. So we're working very diligently to, with the business owners and the property owners to make this happen. I'll let Jaime tell you about some of the events that we're going to have that day.
Thank you, David. The Day of the Child is an event for children, only for children. We're inviting families, we expect about 10,000 folks to come down. We're doing some major marketing campaign on the Hispanica with our friend Nancy Galvand that also sends greetings to the mayor. She's going to help us with the marketing of the event. We hopefully get a lot of people there and just, it's an event for children, no alcohol, just for families to come down and have fun and give an opportunity to vendors to actually sell and make some money on that day. So it's a Sunday, so I'm open for questions or anything.
Right.
We really appreciate you taking this on. I think it's a great, almost a demonstration project to show the business owners what can happen if they all get together under the umbrella of a business improvement district. So thank you for coming up with the idea.
And just for that, in the summer, we're going to, we're getting ready for signatures. So that move, the project is moving very quickly.
Right. That'll be a busy day in the city. Thank you very much, Jaime and David, for coming down. All right. Pete, it's actually a word for, I was going to ask Pete if you, okay, you want to make a second, Meg? All right, cast your votes and on item 8L2, passed unanimously. Thanks.
On a related matter, we had the Red Boat Festival this weekend in Oklahoma City. And I want to compliment the organizers on the signage and the way they handled getting information out to minimize the impact on traffic. They did an excellent job and I just want to recognize that.
Item 8M, I think we're going to have a presentation from Rick.
Right. We're going to, in the process of revising the trust indenture and the bond indenture for the CAPPa, and he's going to talk to us about the changes.
Thank you. It was 47 years ago that the Central Oklahoma Transportation Parking Authority Trust was created and our indenture was developed. Currently, the trust is in a rather unique position in that we don't have any debt. And what that does is it affords us an opportunity to make changes to our trust indenture in a much easier fashion than we would otherwise have to go through if we had bondholders. And so what we are proposing here, there's two significant changes in the indenture that I just want to bring to your attention this morning. The first is one that has been discussed on the council agenda before and deals with the ability of the trustees to be able to change the trust and to separate it into two different groups, one being parking, one being transit, not only in the sense of the functions, but also the assets of the agency. There's no impending desire by the trust to do that right now, but we're taking the advantage of this opportunity to create that possibility in the future. And again, that is something that was brought up on council. I think the other significant item in the trust indenture change deals with, we previously had a $2,000 threshold when we would bid construction projects. And what we're doing now is changing so that we're in compliance with the Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act and the Public Trust Act and raising that level from $2,000 to basically $50,000. Outside of that, the others were really minor changes that dealt more with just bringing us up to date to 2013 as opposed to 1966. Our trustees did consider this item at their last board meeting on, or special meeting on March 26th and approved it. And since the city is the sole beneficiary of the trust, in accordance with the Public Trust Act, we need your approval on these changes.
Questions for Rick?
On the changes, Rick, that you put in place, is there a requirement that somebody from the city council be one of your trustees?
We did not put that requirement in there. We currently have a trustee, Mr. Greenwell serves on that, but it was not required on the agreement. The only unique requirement is that we do have somebody in the trust that lives outside the boundaries of Oklahoma City.
Because of our regional service.
Right.
I think it's incredibly fortunate that we're in this position, that we have the opportunity to take a look at this. And with all the plans moving forward, it seems like it makes a lot of sense.
All right. Any other comments or questions today for item 8M?
Question, Mayor.
Yeah, Larry.
Several years ago, we made it, I think we made it, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, a requirement for the airport trust that somebody from the council would sit on the airport trust?
Yes.
And that was done, I guess, to give us insight into what was going on there?
Yes.
The operation of it? Would not the same thing be appropriate here, even though David's on, to make it in the future, quote, mandatory, unquote, that somebody from the council be involved? I'm just asking if there's any.
Well, that could be done. I believe that's why Mayor Cornett appointed Councilman Greenwell on to do that. And obviously, that doesn't make it permanent because it's done now, it is not in the trust.
I just throw that out for the council's consideration.
Excellent.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. The mayor is on CAPPa.
Yes.
Yeah, the mayor is and has been on CAPPa.
The power of appointment for the other, all the others?
Yes.
A little bit different in the trust indenture said the city manager and a representative of a particular bank were the trustees. So there wasn't any way in for, the sewer trust was like that. It had, the trustees were a mayor, were a representative of Bank A and a representative of Bank B and nobody else. We couldn't get in. So those were a little different. We've got some control. I mean, that was a big deal to me 20 years ago and it, and we've, most of those are fixed that I know of. They're all.
Yes, there's actually three positions on the trust that are by city position. The mayor, the city manager, and the city finance director sit on the CAPPa trust. And then there's five independent positions.
And one of those positions is now filled by Mr. Greenwell.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We're ready to vote on item 8M?
Move to the item.
All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8N, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Okay. Cast your votes on it.
No, no, no. We just need to.
Move the resolution.
We need to approve the resolution.
On N1, we're adopting the resolution.
Okay. I need a motion then to adopt the resolution on 8N1. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8O, understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
Again, a motion to adopt the resolution? Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 8P, understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
And a motion to adopt the resolution? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8Q, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Motion to strike? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8R is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8R?
Mayors, they're coming up. We also, staff would request that item 8R1G be moved to the, be deferred to weeks until the April 23rd meeting. So again, that's 8R1G. That's a claim of Martha Rasmussen.
And that's been, the request is to divert until what date?
Two weeks until April 23rd.
And are you, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Christie?
Yes.
Nice to see both of you. Would you give us your name and address for the record?
Tim and Christie Isle, 3605 Chestnut Ridge Road, Oklahoma City, 73120.
Okay. And about all the council probably knows at this point is it's been denied. Can you fill us in on some of the details?
Yes, sir. On August 7th of 2010, I received a text message from a gentleman that lives in my neighborhood. And he said, I'm looking at the pictures there, he said, "You need to get home and see what's going on behind your house." And we started, I started trying to contact my wife. And what had happened was a water line, what you're not seeing there, but you can see in the picture I have in my hand here, had blown on the outside of our fence and had gone over the fence and had literally flooded our backyard with red mud, dirt. gone over the fence and had literally flooded our backyard with red mud, dirt, to the point that it made it all the way up to our house. And then it circled around the house and was going down our front driveway. Well, we started calling the, that's a good picture of if it would turn at all. We started contacting, my wife did, trying to contact the city to get somebody out there. And after two or three days, they eventually got somebody out there. And she'll fill you in a little more on that conversation. A gentleman named Brad Gilbert came out to the house...
No, Rick.
Rick Gilbert, sorry. Came out to the house with another gentleman and stood in the backyard. I was not present. But my wife and my stepson Christopher was there, and my two-year-old daughter, who was inside the house, as Christopher went back and forth with her. And I'd like, this is the important part of all this, I'd like Christie to explain to you what this gentleman said while he was standing at our house.
Okay.
Well, after, when we got there and we were assessing, we were kind of assessing the situation, we were looking at it, he made the comment that, because I asked him, I said, "Well, what had happened?" And he said that the Hefner Water Plant that's just down the road from, we live in Quill Creek, that's just on the other side, had kind of, I mean, I don't know the exact terminology, but basically cleaned their lines and redid the pressure. And when they released the lines to open them up, that the pressure was really strong and caused several water lanes, water lines in the neighborhood to burst. And so ours being one of them behind our fence there that you can see right behind there. And so it happened, I actually didn't notice it till about 7:35, but around 7:15 is when it actually happened. And the water actually had come all the way up to our sliding glass doors on our patio. It had come all the way, how it didn't get inside the house is on me, but it came all the way up. And that actually, pictures that you're seeing there is four days after it happened. I didn't touch it after, for four days, because it took them until that time to get out there to assess the situation, because I wanted them to see the damage that was actually there and how bad it was. But at one point, that whole area that you see there was covered in water all the way up to our back patio doors. And had actually gone down the sides of the house. And actually, my neighbor next to me had gotten some damage too, but I don't know whether she actually reported it or not.
Okay.
What was important with regard to that is he was, the comments he was making, he said, "It's a water pressure deal." Christie is a dental sales rep. She doesn't know anybody at the water treatment plant. She's not trained on how a water treatment plant works. She would have no idea even how to get this type of information. And so we submitted a claim and waited a few months and just before your last city council meeting, we got a letter and said, "Your claim's being denied because there hasn't been a break on that line in five years." We called them up and called our councilman and started immediately saying, "Well, wait a second. That's, this is totally contrary to what this gentleman said standing in our yard. Your supervisor, who is, his title is the Water and Utilities Field Operations Supervisor, someone who would 100% know that wind line breaks occur, how they occur, nothing that she would ever know." And so we called up and we spoke to a city attorney, and we spoke to our council, and said, "This is what they said." So they took it off your agenda, and they said, "Let us investigate it." We had about three and a half weeks pass, and then just before this meeting, we get a letter. And that letter, very importantly, says that we're not continuing to deny this claim and that this supervisor denies having made any statements regarding any other city main breaks in the area. He only recalls informing Claimant that August 7th, 2013, was the first break on this segment of the city's water line. And so he, they're saying that we're making up the story and that he never said any of this. But then, to believe that, you have to believe that my wife, a dental sales rep, somehow acquired knowledge regarding water pressure and line breaks in our neighborhood. But what was interesting was when you read the rest of this letter, it also states, "By the way, in August of 2013, the water pressure was at 98 PSI, which is on the higher end of the normal range of pressure." And then it also says that also, "There was another line break in your neighborhood." But it doesn't say why that line broke or what was, you know, going on that day.
All right, let's hold it there and let us get some more information. Chris Whitson has signed up to speak too.
Because of the length of time he worked for me.
All right.
He had to run.
Let us get city staff to check in with the council on this item.
Good morning. Amy Harrison, Municipal Counselor's Office.
Okay.
There was a water main break on August 7, 2012, at Claimant's residence behind their fence. It took about 36 minutes for a water service representative once dispatched to get out there and turn the water off, which is certainly within a reasonable amount of time to get the water shut off. The line was repaired within the same 24 hours. The legal standard being prior notice of a problem on this water main. There have been no prior water main breaks on this line. And they did mention that there was, in the memo, excuse me, one other main break in the area. And there was one on the same day, but it was about a half a mile away. So it wasn't on the same water line, area, segment, anything like that. And there also was no record of any problem at the Hefner Treatment Plant that would have caused this water main break.
And in regard to the Hefner Treatment Plant issue, we do have the supervisor here and also Marcia Slaughter to address that, if you'd like them to do it.
I'd like to hear that somebody of authority say there was no problem at Hefner Water Plant. Amy, I mean, you have no authority, but I wanted to have, from the, he stuses for the horse's mouth, that's terrible. He might get himself in trouble. Marcia, would you tell us if there had any problems at Hefner that might have affected the water line?
Good morning, or, good morning, council. I'm, Mr. and Mrs. Isle, I'm Marcia Slaughter. I'm the Utilities Director responsible for Water, Sewer and Trash Service in Oklahoma City. I did personally review data for operation of the Hefner Water Treatment Plant. The plant, pressure coming out of the plant changes over time as water use goes up and down throughout the course of the year. So in the summertime, when it's very hot, the water pressure is slightly higher. It's not, in this case, it wasn't materially higher, just know that where the plant probably operates at about 95 pounds this time of year, and that time of year is operating at about 98 to 104 pounds of pressure. I did personally review the data from the plant's operation. I didn't find pressure surges that day, which would be one of the things we look for. A pressure surge can cause a pipe to break. It appeared to me to be a simple unpredictable break.
Okay. Well, regardless, it's a city line.
That's correct.
And so what are the legalities to our responsibilities to fix a problem like this that happened on a city line outside of their property?
We set a standard for repair responses, and the legality is all, let's see the attorney.
You can, you can look at basically three different things. Number one, whether or not there had been a prior problem with this line or not. And we had, there hadn't been a prior problem with this line. Number two, the response of the city to the break, whether or not we responded reasonably and got out there and shut the water off within a reasonable period of time, and any issues related to that. And then also, you could look at what went on at the treatment plant. You basically would have to have some sort of expert who would look at that and decide whether or not something was done. And so Marcia is our witness on this. If we actually did something negligent at the plant that would have caused this break, then potentially you could pay the claim, but we have no evidence of that.
Kenny, this may be a question for Marcia, but what is the design pressure for our water mains? Because we, 98 pounds was characterized as being at the high end of normal. What is the design capability of our water line?
Typically, it's about 200 PSI is the standard upper-end pressure, design pressure. And that helps, when you see a surge in pressure, that means the pipe has plenty of capacity to take it. The water system generally is built to deliver pressures that match the plumbing code. Plumbing codes set, again, pressure capacity in your house. Your plumbing is also very strong. Pressure limits in the plumbing code are set to make certain that people who are taking a shower don't get stung too hard by the, by the water pressure coming out of their shower.
If I could elaborate on this just for a minute. If you're under 50 pounds of pressure, you don't have very good pressure in your system. We try to keep it above that. It fluctuates a lot during the seasons. When we have heavy usage in the summer, the system generally goes, goes down. But we pump a higher pressure, but your pressure, and because it comes out of your plant at 98 pounds, doesn't mean it's 98 pounds behind your house. There's a lot of factors of that. It diffuses as the pressure gets out, and it's also a function of the elevation. If you're lower, you have higher pressure than if you're on a hill someplace. One of your areas is the one with higher pressure points in the city is Valverde. Valverde is in a valley there, and sometimes in Valverde, the pressures run to 120 pounds static, which means that's just, if you're just sitting there, that's 120 pounds.
But the 98 pounds...
But that's not good, that's kind of hot.
The 98 pounds that was reported in this write-up, would it have been within the pressure limits of the pipeline design?
Oh, it'd be well under that.
Yes, well below.
Okay.
Well, Kenny, in your opinion, based on what you've heard, what discretion does the council have based on state law?
Well, based on the evidence we have, we recommend that you deny, you deny it. And really, I don't think there is any evidence that the city was negligent that's been presented to you. If you do deny that, then the Isles can certainly go to district court and file a lawsuit there. And so here's my, with all due respect to Mr. Jordan. So we're being forced to go to a lawsuit. And I've seen that from where these letters are coming from. But what we have is a huge credibility issue that we're going to be dealing with in a lawsuit. And I'm assuming Mr. Gilbert's here, because I was told he would be, that he'd be open to be questioned this morning, so you're... Is that it? If you can ask him. Do you all mind? Because he stood in our, in our yard and made comments that are now being denied. And I'd like to just have Mr. Gilbert, say whether or not, you know, did you make comments to my wife regarding that there was a mistake made, there was higher pressure at the water treatment plant, and those caused other lines to break?
I'm Ricky Gilbert. I was a field operations supervisor. And no, I did not make any comments causing any blame to be put on the Hefner Water Treatment Plant.
And so you, as a supervisor, you recall only informing the Claimant that October 7th, 2013, was the first break on this segment of the city's water line that could be recalled?
Yes.
Okay. And so with respect to that, then, the, what you're stating is that my wife has made up this story with respect to these other comments?
I'm saying that your wife may have been misinformed, may have forgotten, but I'm not, all I'm stating is I never said those comments.
But there was another, there was, in fact, another water line break in Quill Creek North, that neighborhood on, or in Quill Creek, that very same day, correct?
Yes, sir.
And as a city supervisor in charge of water lines, you would have knowledge of that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you would have knowledge whether or not they were cleaning the plants or what, as a city supervisor in the heights or the levels of water pressure also?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay. So what it comes down to is, it, there's a, there's a large credibility issue here, and it's simple fact of the matter. How would my wife come up with a story about other line, water lines breaking and water pressure issues and turn that in and then be told it was never said while we were standing there? And so where's the inducement to go fix? So as a homeowner living in Quill Creek, then we have to simply take on over $10,000 in damage with regard to this line breaking and flooding our property?
We're really sorry it happened, but let me, let me get with council here and kind of explain where we are. Our legal advice is that, based on the information our staff is providing us, that we don't have the discretion to pay the claim.
Correct.
Yeah. There is a disagreement in facts here, from what you've heard from the homeowners. Whether or not that gets into the, changes the discretion kind of depends on, on your point of view.
Can I ask, some of this, what caused the Robin Ridge line to break the same day?
I would have to say probably the, I really don't have any idea on what would cause a water line to break. Only, only thing I'd do is fix the lines when they do break.
Is it common to have two water lines break in the same neighborhood on the same day?
It's not unheard of. I wouldn't say it's common, but it's not uncommon either, especially in Quill Creek.
During drought conditions like we had in August, the ground moves or is a little bit higher than the average pressure, and we do have more water main breaks during, during that time of the year.
Just to provide some input that's probably not needed, but in Ward 5, we were having water line breaks on a regular basis, not in 2012, but in 2011. And I was the recipient of most of those calls, along with the water department. So like Mr. Kaut said, in times of high usage, drought conditions, again, in Ward 5, they were breaking every few hours, it seemed like, in 2011. But the question I did have, could you file a claim on your homeowner's insurance to help cover the costs that you've incurred?
We may be able to, but then, of course, that's us filing a claim on our own, you know, liability for that and our own, and dealing with our own deductibles and our own premium. But yes, we may be able to do that. I don't know the answer to that, especially since now eight months have passed.
Excuse me, maybe I'm...
Well, I was just going to say, if that possibility exists, is there a requirement that they do so that the city would be...
No, there is no requirement, legal requirement that they would have to file against their insurance first before the city could pay.
Yeah, Pat?
A question, I'm confused. The claim in our report shows $222.78. And you mentioned the figure of $10,000 a minute ago.
No, sir, ours is C.
Pardon me?
Ours is C, is 8C. It's $10,803.48.
I'm sorry. Got it? Okay, thank you.
Can I also say that when I made, when I first noticed about the water damage, that I had called, you know, the number to, to report it, and that I left a message and somebody said they would contact me the next day. Well, they didn't contact me the next day. And the reason why, when I called back, they said that the lines were, it was heavy traffic because of a lot of water breaks that were happening during that point in time. So that's why it took them until actually Friday to get out there. And I actually talked to a supervisor that, because I was pretty irritated about the whole situation because of the dirt. I have a two and a half-year-old. We couldn't go outside. It was an absolute mess out there. And so I was kind of getting agitated because I couldn't get somebody out there to assess the damage and take care of it. And I talked to a manager, where's that piece of paper? And he finally was able to get Mr. Gilbert out there on Friday at 9 o'clock in the morning. It happened Tuesday at 7:00. Even though they were able to get the water pressure off and everything that, you know, within 15, 20 minutes, it took them until Friday to get out there and so we could even start the cleanup process. So that tells me that there were a lot of issues going on at that time.
Okay. I need a motion from council.
Unless somebody in the city staff would admit something different, what I've heard this morning convinces me that we have no liability, and I would move for denial.
A motion saying, any other comments or questions? Cast your votes. The claim is denied. We're very sorry it happened. In circumstances like this, the council's hands are tied due to state law and the evidence that we have available to us. And we're not insinuating or encouraging one way or the other to go across the street and file a claim.
Thank you very much.
All right, we need a motion on Item 8R1 outside of Item C, which we've just voted on. And then we'll be voting on the deferral on Item 8G. All right, cast your votes. These claims are denied. And then we need a motion on Item 8R1G to defer that item for two weeks. Cast your votes, and that item is deferred. Run Item 9A. These are claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under Item 9? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Onto items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Yes, Your Honor. There's been a lot of talk in the media and around town about the need for 200 police officers, additional police officers in Oklahoma City. Has the chief come up with any kind of plan to implement an increase, significant increase in our manpower? You come up with the total cost? Because the total cost is going to be more than just multiplying the starting salaries by the, the number of police officers we run on board. There's new supervision that has to be created, more lieutenants, more sergeants, whatever. There's cars to be bought, there's equipment to be bought to support these kind of police.
There's cars to be bought, there's equipment to be bought to support these kind of police. How they are going to be paid for and then how they're going, how they would be deployed if indeed we found a method to pay for it.
Ms. Ryan, first of all, we added 40 in, in this budget year. We're looking at adding another, another number of, I don't know what that number will be in the next budget year. And so, you know, is it, are we looking at a net of 200? I don't know if there's a, an actual target that, that's out there. We did this staffing study that was done about three years ago. And so the staff is not evaluating total cost of a 200 because I, I don't know exactly what that ties to at this point in time. We're looking at, at implementing the ones that we funded this year and we're looking at budgeting some additional officers for next budget.
Well, then I think we need to do a, a explanation for our citizens, because the number gets, as it gets printed and talked about, it becomes a fact. There was a book written several years ago related to that to tell the same lie often enough, people begin to believe it's fact. And I think we need to be careful we don't fall into that trap. We've got this number out there, it's in the community and people are looking for something to happen. And we need to define what's going to happen in, in terms of what's really going to happen and give it to the citizen.
Right. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you fellow counselors. It is good to be here and also thank Ward 7. At a later date, I would like to talk about fire protection in the eastern part of Ward 7. Thank you.
Uh huh. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I just, there was a great meeting last week at the Seber Hotel, put on really by Kathy O'Connor of the Urban Renewal Authority and our planning department to talk about some amendments to the Midtown Plan. And I think there were 60 or more people there, great input from the neighborhood. It was very well received. I also, along with lots of my colleagues, had an opportunity to attend the placemaking conference in Norman on Wednesday. I was really very, very happy to see that we had so much city staff there. According to all reports and Steve Lackmire's good article in the paper today, it was the most impressive gathering of speakers and the largest audience for this kind of a conversation. And I just, I think there were lots of great take homes for Oklahoma City and things that we'll be able to do. And I guess third comment is our, several of us had a chance to travel this week to Austin with the Chambers inner-city visit. We do that, Chamber does that once a year and we all have an opportunity to attend various visits. Austin has a lot of things going for it, but I came home really so proud of Oklahoma City. I think we're on track in so many ways and, and there are things David Greenwell pointed out, Austin's traffic jams. And we got stuck in one or two of them and, you know, Oklahoma City is, is doing a much better job in that regard. So it's always good to go see another community and learn from it, but I think you'd end up coming home feeling really proud about what's going on in Oklahoma City.
Counselman Siller, autocorrect doesn't like the word placemaking.
It does not.
For the record.
I'm afraid to think what it may correct it as. I had trouble with spell check in the past, so be careful about that. Placemaking is a true word.
David? Pete? Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I was given the opportunity earlier to make a crash commercial for an event that was happening tonight. Then I was handed a yellow slip here to announce that the event has been canceled. There was going to be a code enforcement workshop at the, at the Civic Center tonight and because of inclement weather, that event has been canceled. So do not come to the code enforcement workshop if you were planning to do so, but please come when it's rescheduled because it's a very valuable session. They're going to have a number of the folks involved in code enforcement there to educate the attendees on the different ramifications of code enforcement. So again, the code enforcement workshop for tonight has been canceled. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Ed? James? All right.
I'd like to make an additional comment. I was remiss in not doing this earlier, but in the same context of telling the public the same story consistently, I would like to caution the people in the city staff and my colleagues about putting out numbers that are developed outside the city's realm of authority. And I think we put some numbers out that tend to confuse our citizens sometime. And as I said before, if they're put out often enough and said often enough, they become a fact and we have to live with that fact. It may not be the truth or not. And I go along with, I'm a firm believer in everybody has a right to their own opinion. They don't have the right to their own facts. I think we need to be careful about that.
City manager reports.
Nothing today, sir.
All right, citizens to be heard. We have one person that's signed up, Joe Sarge Nelson.
My name is Joe Sarge Nelson. And if I could take a brief moment, I'd like to tell the two young gentlemen that are now occupying the two seats, it's gratifying, a man of my age, to see you young people take a hold in city government, because this is the place to start. And I welcome you aboard, okay? And like I said, good morning. And as already, most of the body already knows, my name is Joe Sarge Nelson. You'll have to excuse me, I've got some stuff in my eyes, so I'm going to have to read it rather than memorize it. Is that all right with you, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. And for more than 30-plus years, I've been an active concerned citizen here in Oklahoma City. And as I call it, being a taxpayer's watchdog. There's been many important issues in the past that I have spoken to this city council about, taxpayers' issues. But there's a new issue that must be addressed by you, this city's council, immediately. And it's about something much more important than the dollars and cents issues. It deals with the very heart and character of this city, this state of Oklahoma, and of who we are as a people. Last month, the state legislature, in its typical lack of common sense, repealed the ban on horse slaughter here in Oklahoma. It's going to be a very sad day for Oklahoma when November the 1st, 2013 rolls around, because the cruel and hideous law will now go into effect. Now, the cruel slaughter of one of God's noblest creatures should never happen here in Oklahoma, much less Oklahoma City, the very capital of this state. And it must be stopped now before it ever gets started. Remember this, right here in Oklahoma City, we have the National Cowboy Hall of Fame, the Western Heritage Center, the Heritage Place, home of the reigning champions, right here in Oklahoma City, and Remington Park Racetrack right out here, and the National Raining Horse Association. And let's not forget the horse events that we see monthly out at our own State Fairgrounds Arena and the rodeos, the 101 Ranch, that are connected with such names as Clemmy Spadden, Ben Johnson, Gene Autry, Roy Rogers, Dale Robertson. And let's not ever forget Oklahoma's favorite son, Will Rogers. Our heritage and reputation of our character are at stake. I'm asking you, this city's council, to do two things to make sure horse slaughter never happens in Oklahoma City. One, devise a resolution that hopefully unanimously passes condemning horse slaughter and stating clearly that this does not type of business that Oklahoma City tolerates for once. And secondly, pass an ordinance banning horse slaughter in Oklahoma City. Now let me be the first to say that this city will go on record to be the first against this awful industry. I've loved horses all my life. They're majestic and they're majesty of beauty. We all grew up one way or another with Roy Rogers and Trigger, Lone Ranger and Silver. Horses are to be loved and respected. They in their own right are American icon. Horses have been a part of Oklahoma's history since the run of 89 to our races right out here at Remington Park. Let's never forget the beautiful winning fields of Oklahoma. Don't let them becoming the killing fields of our horses. I've got news for the horse slaughtering industry and the lobby. This race isn't over yet. The people and their beloved horses may be stumbling out the gate, but watch us at the finish line. Don't let horse slaughter happen in Oklahoma City. Let them live. And I thank you.
Thanks, Sarge. With no further business, words earned.